The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, other god, individual.
Morning, everybody. I will call a meeting to order. We have a quorum. I will take a motion to approve the agenda in a minute. Oh, no, second. I'm motioning a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Uh, Rich, wanna hear it first?
I'm working on the annual report. Um, updating some projects. I don't have any. Thirty-eight days on their box covers, those local box covers we have, but the contractor is done, closing place recently. More. These are three ninety, I don't know if they're, they might be starting on the afternoon or something. I remember we're not gonna be doing much close railroad tracks, so those. Railroad crossings are gonna have the old asphalt within a hundred or so feet because we didn't, we wanted to get the stuff left and we didn't want to really wait for. The months of railroad approvals and things like that, so we'll see how that goes. Uh, but just keep that in mind, they're probably gonna get comments about that, but the rest of the road will be fine. Well, those are those. We've been picked up RC's pickup Fridays, we've got our, our equipment here. Still looking to get two more bodies in before winter. All I've got for you this morning.
Okay, you gotta think for rich, yes. Thank you, Rich. Uh, drainage. I see him, we had.
One thing. No, this is um, regular claims. Um, Jacob will be here later, so can we block that?
Yeah, do you wanna do the claims now?
Yeah.
Be next.
Is there a motion to approve the drainage claims?
Not drainage, they're regular.
Oh, they're.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, we had to, we had to do this because people were gonna be laying on their credit cards and somebody had to get vehicles.
So we don't need to approve the drainage where it's going in and coming back out? There's shit about checks, you can cancel checks, that's what the top one is there.
Oh, is it?
That's what she explained to us when she brought it down.
Oh, okay.
So I will motion to approve the drainage claim changes or.
I'll second that. I have a motion in a second. Is any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now the claims, that's alright.
Don't see that one very often.
There's second to that.
Second clients.
I have a motion in a second to approve the claims, we're gonna discuss them all those. All of them favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Hopefully we won't have as many of those, well, I, my goal is to only do this twice a month. Because.
Oh, you mean?
Yeah, we shouldn't have to do extra claims like we'd have done in the past.
Just not getting them in in time?
Nope. We're working on it.
Yeah, we don't wanna pay late fees.
No. But that's the department heads' issue, not ours.
For all department heads listening? There you go. Uh, is there any reports?
Um, no.
Do you have any liquor licenses? I'm all, what, I didn't see fireworks permits come through. Okay, hold on, let me sign this and.
It's being a roll.
I'll slow down. Now. We have a. Public Health Board appointment. Nicole Sheffield, she's a nurse practitioner at Mercer One in North that up here. And I need.
I saw the application. That all good with public health with its own?
Absolutely, yeah, we got a meeting in September one to do all the changeovers.
She's definitely thinking towards September. We need to make it effective September first, so.
She wants to get office and she can, I think now, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve, uh, Nicole Sheffield for Board of Health effective September.
I will second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
What needs your, oh, okay.
What's that?
Find it someone who's easier.
This really worked out great for us.
Yeah, I was glad it been somebody younger that's willing to step in there, you know, I mean, it's hopefully they'll be willing to serve as Dr. Seaman. Makes it easy.
Worry about it again.
Apparently found somebody right here.
Right.
So, that's good.
Yeah.
Uh, water system improvement project, you got a little update there?
Yeah, Jason said the, you know, tower's painted, um, everything's done. On the tower portion, running, they'll have to come back and do is disinfect it when we go and put it in service after the pipe's installed, so. That'll be down the road. Um. But yeah, that's all good to go now, so. And then he's gotta look at that. Other tower to see if we could put anything on the bottom of that.
For safety.
For safety. Time and wanting to climb, I, I don't know if it'll stop him, we should stop from getting up to the ladder portion and really being able to take off, but.
True.
Cause I don't know what they were trying to climb up, did you ever hear Dan? What they were trying to find?
That theme?
You know, by climbing the tower at the single. Just after we had this discussion.
That's pretty.
So he's, he's gonna look at that too when he's up there looking at the, the other tower and we'll see if we can add something to that, just to.
Just to maybe.
Try to make it a little harder for him, cause if they want up there, I guess they'll get up there.
See, we just put a sign on, so stay off. I know.
The virus, like, I had to get to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is pretty.
And that's, that's the thing with every time and, uh, casino security guys. So. But yeah, that's all we got for now, I guess.
Um. Same thing will fit on the ladder, but.
Good, good thing, ladder's your ladder.
It's hopeful.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to put something on there.
There's been insurance and I've been, I'm surprised nothing's been said before.
Yeah, I don't think they're having fun anywhere.
Maybe they haven't seen the towers, I had to inspect the other tower, I don't assume they, we've got.
They had, yeah, so. Value on it and everything.
At least looked at it or did they? Look at it from the parking lot, a mile away. See where it's at, so. Oh, well, either.
I know.
Uh, discussion on water and sewer rates, I think Jason's still working on those.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I can take that off if you have one or.
Yeah, that's why you can get off.
I guess we need to, yeah.
Probably talk with them this week sometime, so.
We just need to get it done so we don't lose money. Uh. Wouldn't work, betco, Melissa.
Morning.
Good morning.
Uh, just that, uh, there's a community catalyst grant workshop, so I'm gonna promote that if anybody is interested in the two counties about applying for that grant. The workshop is very informative and it takes you step by step, so if anybody would like to apply for the grant, I would take them with to the workshop. Uh, unfortunately, the workshop that is closest to us is, um, in Independence on September twenty-second.
A catalyst grant, that's with the state, right?
Yep, that's that hundred thousand, um, through the city. That, uh, a private owner can apply for to create housing.
Yeah, lower, lower story retailer, something that upper story housing is that they're trying to, they kinda. Trying to support and save the downtowns?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You bet.
Did you get as much information as you wanted on the hotels?
Oh, yeah, yep, and I, we're following up through, um, I have conversations this week to follow up with everybody that went to that, um, meeting.
Okay, good.
And then also, uh. Um, at our last exec board, uh, Alliant Energy was there. And he, um, secured a, uh, an area for us to have our exec board. At that facility, which Jackie, I'll get you the information when I have it, but, um. So it wouldn't be at my office, it would be at that facility so that we can take a tour afterwards.
Yeah, that was good. Anything else for Melissa, guys? Thank you, Melissa.
You bet.
Uh, anything new on EMS or anything?
No, I'm just working on my stuff though, the corner.
Okay, Chris, people service?
Getting our report, any questions?
Again.
No, I don't think so, figuring this function the way it should, yeah, it's a good sign. And we just had a sewer clean last. Third day.
Did you sure, you're gonna do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're, change the subject, I was gonna ask Rich, are we gonna get anything done on the curb out there by the plant, get that dirt leveled?
Yeah, I was talking to RC about that the other day, if we start getting things slowed down a little bit.
Get a chance, could still good time to do some wildflower seeding and stuff, I think you can.
There are much agrees.
He said just by birthing, there was a little bit, he said it was just little balls, it was.
Nothing.
Like a one inch ball, couple of them come through, he said nothing.
Okay. I'm kinda wondering this. I'm, I'm assuming they've got grease traps in the casino and birthing and all that.
You know, it's got a ten thousand gallon.
They're probably pretty good at keeping their stuff up, but.
But it's big enough, it does the job.
Okay. Okay, good.
The only time I really figured grease when it came in. Cause it's all stirred up, they mix it and get the, the phone would get away.
Yeah.
And I'll see phone.
Yeah, that's not too bad, that's all. There's much fluid to go through the place.
Right.
And there'll be more.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
Uh, department head discussion. Anything, Dan?
Um, just, uh. Being political, seeing them picking up a little bit, we're getting some detail, we have Governor DeSantis in on Saturday afternoon. We did that and then, uh, Attorney General Byrd is gonna be in this morning. Um, that will be doing a little bit of security for her too, so that's picking up a little bit, otherwise.
Okay.
We, uh, we pushed out. Bunch of new phones for deputies and got their computers updated, I've got one phone left and I talked to him this morning, he's. This morning, so, uh, wrapping that up.
We need to do your review too. That gets, keeps getting bumped, um, do you wanna close second on that?
Well.
I would imagine you would, once you.
I have no idea, I've never done this before, so you, whatever standard for you guys. If it's, yeah.
You, you can request it if, um, if it has to do with your. It's one of the allowable ones that you can, you can ask for a close second.
Yeah, or otherwise, long as discussed, just right here like this. Or it's closed session, no recording, no nothing, it's because it's a personality view, still.
Wait, wait, most, most reviews are done with employee.
Yeah, we'll do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he needs to request that.
Definitely, yeah.
In writing, okay.
But we gotta.
We gotta set a date for. Are you available? The, uh. First week of September, like the. Six, seventh or eighth, like the sixth?
Yeah. Uh, should be able to be, let's look, let's see here.
About like the eight?
Yes, September eighth.
Should've looked at my other calendar.
That's just next week Friday.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I'm clear.
A week from, from, a week from Friday.
Yeah, not this Friday.
Not this Friday, though, Friday after.
This Friday, the first.
This Friday is the next Friday.
I said the next week, Friday.
Yeah, I got you. Yeah. We should have here for you.
What time is it?
Ten o'clock. September eighth. Tentatively right now. Sound good to you?
Sure, yes.
So get that request into Jackie for a.
Okay.
Closed session. We'll just plan on that. You don't hear from me, I'm available.
Okay.
If you hear from me, we'll have to juggle a date.
Okay.
So, okay. Any other department heads on there? Uh, supervisor weekly reports, what'd you have, AJ?
Um. Uh, we just had a. Air connections on Tuesday, there was a bunch of the agenda, so we just had a quick soon waiting to approve all of our claims. Uh, keep that process going, so. Um. And that's it, that's all I have.
Mark?
And that was, that's not anyone. You sure, and, uh. You got to report from the whole and everything.
Yeah.
That's fine. We're, we're going good, I mean, as big as tech problem is, we need to continue to go good and. You know, keep up with safety solutions and keep up with their training and everything and, um. Yeah, and fortunately, our, our big year is gonna drop off, you know, this year, so whether that could help, I think in the next couple of months, he'll know and be sending you some information to do on. You know, what the premium will look like for next year, I'm open, so. Also, it'll be a nice, nice drop anyway.
Where's the drop this year?
Yeah, so, the, the big ones coming off, so that can be the good thing, like you say, just continue to move forward, um.
Keep training.
Keep training.
Document.
Yeah, document, we appreciate, you know, everything we do, so, yeah.
Okay. That it?
That is it.
I had the, uh. District two court. House regarding a court. Courtroom technology meeting. And Tim Wright was here with CTI. And the only thing that they want, they want, they would ask the county to do. Is provide a pathway for the cables, which is pretty easy, and the courtrooms, we can either go above the ceiling, under the floor, in the walls, we figured out. And then a place to put the control rack. And, uh. The other thing that they would like the county to do is they need a twenty amp power outlet. Underneath each one of the. Um. Lawyers.
Mm-hmm.
Tables. Upstairs, there'd be like, next to the mics, there's a cable coming off underneath the table going to the mic, either in there or right alongside it, they need to plug in, same way on the other table. And same way in the magistrate room in the front table to put a plug in in the middle there. Uh, the other thing that they need is plugins on the south walls for the big screen TVs that are going up. And upstairs, we've got a clock plugged in, so hopefully we can plug into that with it. We are gonna have to run electrical, not only to the middle of the. Um, lawyers tables, but we'd have to run it back then and up the wall there, down about eighteen, twenty inches from the ceiling to plug that television in, other than that. Uh. It's all, everything's covered, it has a five-year warranty on it, and after the warranty's up, the state, it's a state problem to pick up the tab on all of it, it doesn't cost the county anything. All we have to do is approve. The electrical bid. To get the plugins put in. And Brian was at the meeting, so Brian knows exactly where the plugins are going and what needs to be done there, the rack upstairs, this. Sticks out about twenty-four inches and was about three foot by three foot high, they. In the library, right next to the courtroom, they're gonna move some of the books into the other library and then slide. Some of these book racks down and put it right in the corner there, so it won't be even in the courtroom upstairs. And down here, they're gonna slide that table down. And then just put it in that corner. The electrical. Down there will be run on top of the floor and they have an eighty, a little deal that goes like this, if you can, if you can run a wheelchair across it and the whole nine yards, but it's gonna have to come down and go across there over to that table. Because that's cement, they can't come up the floor.
Yeah.
They asked if we wanted them, if it was okay to drill holes in the tables, and I said absolutely not, so the, basically what this comes down to is they're putting in mics, speakers, cameras. They're gonna, they'll get it all set up for Zoom and put in TV screens. So the mics will go underneath the table in front and speakers will go underneath the table like down here in front. They do need a plug in on the backside of where you're. Where the, uh, witness stand is, but there we have a plug in on this side, so basically we should be, we're gonna have that.
We just gotta pay for them to cooperate.
Yeah, we have to get our, the different places that they need it.
They want all the equipment.
So.
Good.
But at first, I gotta get Brian to get a bid.
And we'll just okay it.
And then we'll just okay it, and it probably is not gonna get done till March or later, but I thought we ought to get a bid now, while it's right in Brian's mind and my mind is where we need electrical plugins. But they're still gonna have to come back here when they do the magistrate room. Because the electrician's gonna have to do something at the same time that is, so we could, we could do the rest of it. But he still, the electrician's gonna have to come back during that period, well, kind of line it up, what?
They have a timeframe. When it needs to be done.
Uh, I didn't, don't know about that, he just said it wouldn't be done till March or later. I'm guessing March or April, depending on how their schedule goes, the way it looks right now. So, yes.
Please use a time to get an electrician in, cause they're not always, they're busy.
Yeah.
So, he said it'd take roughly about four days for the installation in the courtroom and about three days for the installation in the magistrate room. So. But yeah. Basically, we just aren't, they just, the pathway for the cables is pretty easy, we figured that out, but they need the county to provide the power. Or this.
You have a choice, that one, good.
Doing well, yeah. Yeah.
Well, yes you do. They had one county refuse it.
Then.
They're not putting it in.
Sure.
And the judge is not real happy.
Sir. Cost or why, why didn't they wanna do it?
Just didn't want to do. The way they explained it that day, they just, they said they had one county that said no, and they just didn't wanna do it.
Yeah, my question would be, it's how long before do, if we ever will, it's always been talked about, is, you know, combining court system and stuff.
With this there expense.
You're talking about eight days of electrical work, it's gonna be a few dollars.
Oh, no, no.
That was there.
That's theirs, that was their installation, ours is just running wires to those plugins underneath the three.
I know.
Tables, but I mean, yeah, we're still gonna have a little bill involved. But, uh. Yeah, that's about all I, uh. That's all I took down for notes on that one. So. But you can refuse it. So keep that in mind, if you don't want it, if you don't want the big screen TVs, cause that one up in the courtroom's gonna be pretty big. So, but. At least Jackie then, when she comes and we use the magistrate room, won't have to bring our extension board. She can plug in underneath. So.
Good, that's what I had last week, what's that, we had some youth out at that moment.
But, uh. Uh. Next week agenda items, oh, wait a second. Hold tight, we're going back up to drainage. I guess we're down as far as we're gonna go, we're to you, Jacob, on the BD fourteen engineer report.
Hold on, let's get Val here.
Oh, that. I can't see there. You have a round one?
I've got plenty of other copies.
Yeah.
We don't have any. We don't have the dear.
You have any bills in that?
You might lock out that.
What I just handed out was DB fourteen, it's a transition for just east of town here. We've had a couple of, I'm saying, and that one in the past. Regarding. What to do here now and what will be at the railroad, the quarry's also involved. What we proposed and our plans. We wanna maybe turn to. It is to go to the. AO two, it's the second big sheet. For Belle from that one?
Yep, she's coming, I hear.
There you go, man. I want everybody to buy.
Jump the gun, Belle.
Your official title, Chris, your fourteen's engineer report. So we'll be decided here in another later date for public. What we proposed, our report is, is cheap AO two. The orange lines or whatever, please, they're outside. We proposed. The existing tile outlets down here along the gravel road, and we proposed coming farther up north, kind of where it crosses a little bit upstream, that seemed to be the area that was the biggest issue. And running a new lateral to the river from there. Within laterals coming off of that. In three different directions, plus a lateral over to the east. The reason we did that was from the cost savings, if we could cut off this little portion of land over here, we could get a little smaller tile. And this area seems to be the most. Poorly drained area, right in that, that stretch, right there, so we broken it up into what we call a lower main. Which is this lateral ending just east of railroad tracks. I'm gonna do a lateral four. Which is the one that's farthest to the west. Lateral. Or upper main. Which is the one that's on the east side of railroad tracks. Lateral five, which is this. One that's farthest east off of lower main, and then. Uh, BD five laterally. Is taking this portion that brings farthest east ground to the BD eight ditch, these, so we can take those acres off the main. Further reducing the size of this. Of this main.
Is that open ditch at the end of that one?
Yep.
And eight.
That's an open ditch right there, yeah, and then.
Well, that's down, we have the top of that road.
Yeah, yeah, it's right south of the curve and.
Okay.
The lower main, we have an estimated cost of about. Construction cost. Yeah, three, two hundred ninety-nine thousand. Which is about two hundred and fifty dollars an acre for the whole. Water shed, we're pretty, as far as tiling goes, this was a pretty good deal. The rest of the laterals are all around that six hundred dollar an acre for the lands of benefit. The one, two, three, four other laterals, you have less than our dollars an acre that proposed, which would be in addition to the. Everybody pays the two fifty, could everybody benefits from that lower main? And that's just the construction cost, in our report, you guys had asked us to do a reclass, we wanted to wait on doing the official reclass. Because if this isn't built, it really changes things, but we did do a quick reclass. For every single, every single lateral, so that the guys could see a kind of a ballpark estimate, I'll get there into the goal cost, where it gets right in front of the plans. Again, using just the construction of us. So this one here that I've got showing up, it is for the lower main. And you can see that there's a range from. About five hundred dollars an acre down to. Ten or twenty dollars an acre at the upper portion. And we did include this part of town. Um, looking at it though. About. There's about seven percent of total land is either residential or commercial lots in Northwood. And there look like they're gonna pay about two percent of the total cost. Will be about what their range is, so I don't know from a cost. From cost to benefit ratio, if it's worth, they would have to be annexed. So if you annex them, they would have the rights then to drain, to petition for improvements, also the right to. They'd have the right towards remonstrance. The right to drain their land to it, so if the city ever wanted to put a storm through, they would be able to do so. Now, if you didn't annex them. We would, they would lose out on that funding source up there, however, the landowners wouldn't have access. To sit to construct a storm, so if the city would wanna start, fuck a storm, so they'd have to get permission to do so. There is some benefits to not annexing as well.
Two percent?
Two percent of this whole project cost to be roughly.
I say we don't want to actually. That's. I think we'll have the same time we had up in the north, and I don't wanna deal with city north of that. It's, it's already been a fight, just have a discussion to come and, um, we'll just, not, and if they ever wanna come to it, then we. People are. Stay looking at that discussion.
The problem is that they never can get out of it. Once you get in, you're in forever.
And you can always bring him in later, this report makes it. It doesn't set out that they never will benefit, it just sets up right there. There couldn't be, there maybe isn't, it isn't a benefit worth pursuing at this time. Yeah, with that, I'll let her go and follow, well. I assume you guys are gonna have that opinion, so. I wrote a letter to. And then for the hearing, typically, you only have to invite the people who are already in the district. Um, on DD forty-eight, I suggested that we invite everyone who is in the benefited lands, so lands would also be annexed. I would recommend the same for this. Minus the lands in town, since there is no interest in bringing them in, so all the other farmers who, cause there is some other lands that we'd be recommending, they've seen. That's, that's farmland.
You have anybody on the west side of sixty-five that you're gonna annex them?
We do that.
Okay, so.
Nobody on, um, can't remember what his name was.
Paul.
He provided that he had had enviled his, he had held his land all the river, which makes sense, they're, they're right there. So we, we run right on sixty-five. Um, the lands to be annexed, included mostly this land. Out here that would actually grain to this. This ladder all over here that we propose to take their lands. Off, and the water kind of comes around like this, and then slopes. So it makes a real wide sweeping. Through there. But there, that's majority, and also there is some agricultural land up near, near Northwood as well. Overall. Estimated at one point, about one point four million. If we do, all the laterals are done. Everything is done. There is no. County road crossings, there is one state crossing that'll, the state would have to pay for. Um, there is also one railroad crossing. Which fortunately, the state law changed this year, that's, that the railroad is responsible for paying for that. So that was. That's a, I estimate that about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar savings. The district that, that state laws been changed. It is, it is nice that they at least gave us that cover, I would, and then we would of course still assess them. As though they're a landowner on top of it. For their benefit to receive, but. And that will take some time, the permitting process for them is slow and painful, so if it is approved. We would, it would take some time to finally get the permits approved. But at least, we know we can get them to pay for it when it's all done. Yeah, if you have any questions, you guys should feel free to give me a call. In our office or. We meet individually before the hearing.
So is any of this repaired, or would it pretty much all be improved?
Yeah, I know we, I think our label on our plan says repairs, that's just kind of a boilerplate. And there's no, there's no. No work to be done. South of the county park, all the land in the south, there is still the tile down there, but. As the quarry keeps eating away land, it keeps looking pretty good, they're gonna look faster still, probably.
Yeah, that tile you're running isn't on the north side of.
Yep. Yeah, yeah, all, all, everything is north of, I can't remember that.
Four fifty?
Yeah, I should have labeled that. Everything's north of that point. We tried to keep the laterals pretty short. And it's really kind of a. They can piecemeal this together if they like to, do the lower main and then maybe do a lateral or two and then come back, they have the options to come back. Well, I gotta think a dozen copies on, we'll get to valid.
Yeah, and there's only a handful of landowners, I think that was pretty much all of them the first time.
They seemed interested.
They were just, I know there were just some concerns on how things work, but. And uh, you know, the railroad crossings were some problems, so. But we can take care of all that, but I think. Hope everybody to be. Okay with it, so.
Hopefully they're still flow that way, hopefully crap, they're still okay.
So hopefully they still wanna invest in their infrastructure, their, of their farms, so.
Well, it's like somebody's gone awful wet, you know?
Yeah, there's, you know, I know there's. Quite a few acres out there that get drowned out every year, so. You're putting it in and out, but you're not getting nothing like out of it, so. That's why we just need to set a hearing date, that's the setting.
Motion to accept the report.
Oh, second demo for.
Hello, motion and a second to accept the DB fourteen engineer's report, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion. Carries. Uh, now we gotta set a hearing date, what, twenty days, hours?
How, how's your schedule again? Are we gonna do like a? What, what days are we thinking?
I, I would make a minute at this point to wait till after progress.
Kind of wondering that.
Forty days is gonna hit us. It looked like early November, I mean, my purpose is definitely gonna be pushed up for some of the areas from Northwood anyway.
I would, obviously, you know.
This past election days.
Let's go like, November twentieth, twenty-seventh?
I'm gonna be twentieth. I'm gonna be gone.
That's Thanksgiving week.
That week before.
The week before, I'm gonna leave like, I think Thursday, and I'll be gone all through here. Seventeenth. Go after Thanksgiving, Monday to the twenty-seventh.
Work for you.
That's probably on my night.
Yeah, that's okay.
Nine thirty.
Twenty-seven, nine thirty. Then this way the owners, people are part of it now, they come in to get reports and look at it and. Wrap their, wrap their heads around it before we meet, and then they can be a part of us, so.
I'll reserve the, who did magistrate? Yeah, this is an eleven.
Cleaning the motion for that, how much your motion to set the hearing date for? November twenty-seventh at nine thirty AM.
I'm motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All we got first, Jacob?
Yeah, that letter, um, it's regarding the annexation. It wasn't, doesn't need to be a fish, it's strictly filed, I don't need to accept.
Um, did you? You get some information on?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, is that the one?
Yeah, we got, got the box, we stand, we're working on it.
We're just pushing that.
Yep, we are.
Threshold of. One ninety-seven, whatever, one ninety-six.
It's our number one, we're working on it. Absolutely, that, I, we know there's some hope here that, on this farm, so.
Yeah, I, I think the way I'm reading it, everybody up there is. Wanted, it's gotta get fixed, there's, there's some might be there, I think everybody's in favor of, of doing that one too, but. We're just getting outside that threshold where. Hopefully the engineering should be fairly simple of. Replacing what's there, but.
Look at the approval action. So we're doing just straight repair and we're giving improvement, just as even if I. I'm just, hey, let you know, you could spend. Three thousand repair hard, plus. Half million improvement, maybe it depends.
Cause they did say it could be under sized and.
We did, we have gotten that part of it.
Did you uh, DD two down there, the lateral where that crossing was for fat map, did you guys take care of that or?
No, we put rip wrap around it, and I talked to Dwayne, who's the operator for ours, and he said he came out. It's top fourteen feet wide, and then there's rip wrap around it, so hopefully that'll.
Yeah, it should stabilize it and keep it from going any further, I mean, it looks nice, I did drive by there, I thought they'd done that, I was curious to take. Wide enough to make him happy, so. Pretty narrow before.
Maybe it's like twenty foot pipe to start with, so.
Yeah.
It would have been narrow.
Well, it looks different when it's clean versus your ass, so. Anyway, it's nervous, you know. Thank you.
You guys got any other questions, Jacob?
I don't think so.
Thank you. That is all we've got for today. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second?
Oh, motion a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.